Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 7th meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stand, one nation under their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the roll of council?
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Malick?
Here.
Councilmember Redina?
Absent.
Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Ayer?
Here.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda? Moved by Councilmember Ayer, signed by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the agenda. All favor? All opposed? The agenda is approved. We have communications today from our city administrator.
No, Mayor.
We now come to public comment general time, rather, reserved time. Public comment reserved time is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council in the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment reserved time, one needs to have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers in all instances will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first speaker today is Raymond Somich.
Mayor, this caller is on Zoom. Ray Somich?
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, yep.
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. I apologize. I thought I was being heard clearly before. Thank you for allowing me the time to be with you this evening, mayor, council president, council members. My time's limited, so I will get right to it. This is only a summary of our horrible situation. We can provide full and verifiable details. We had expected to operate a business in your city for the last five months and for years to come, but our company's been seriously wronged at a level of nearly $1 million, and this amount increases daily. Many people are blaming each other, but respectfully, I must tell you that your city must take full responsibility. Last year, we decided to purchase an existing dispensary in Ann Arbor. We've been a cultivator in Michigan for four years, so we knew of the strict regulatory environment and our need for extensive due diligence. August 23rd of last year, our team drove to Ann Arbor from our Ohio offices to meet with Rachel Rickinger, the first of many, many communications with her. Rachel outlined everything we needed to do in order to legally and operate a business at 450 South Main Street. She never expressed any possibility that we might not be able to operate. Since we had no knowledge of your city ordinances, we trusted Rachel as a representative of your city to provide us accurate information. Last October 30th, we received a certificate of occupancy from your city to open our dispensary. On the day after receiving this official assurance that we could operate, we executed on our business transaction, making a very large down payment, executing a multi-year lease. On February 12th, we passed inspection by the Bureau of Fire Services. On February 20th, we passed both the CRA pre-licensure inspection and the Ann Arbor Building Department inspection. On March 11th, we submitted our Ann Arbor cannabis permit application with a $5,000 fee. Suddenly out of nowhere, we were notified that we were in violation of a city ordinance, and we could not open our business. Remember, a dispensary operated at this exact location for years. Another dispensary is still operating just around the corner. We painstakingly followed every directive given by representatives of your city, and then your city suddenly told us we could not operate. How could your city cause us to be harmed in this way? We'd made a huge financial investment, not only in the business we bought after receiving the city's certificate of occupancy, and the property that we pay rent on every month because we signed a lease, but in our people, communicating with your staff, our legal fees. And after all this, we're stuck at zero revenue because of a continuing horrific series of errors, oversights, misfeasance, and maybe malfeasance.
30 seconds.
This is wrong. It needs to be corrected, starting tonight. Please help us to do business and become a part of your community. That's all we're asking for. I know I'm out of time. Thank you for allowing me to share our truths. We look forward to speaking more with you about this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Lengas.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and address the city council. My name is Michael Lengas, and I represent Kings High. Kings High is currently a tenant at 450 South Main Street. However, my client has been paying random location for the last eight months. He's been unable to open, as you've already previously heard. As you know, this location has been a provisioning center in most of its recent past history, fully licensed and approved by both the state of Michigan and the city of Ann Arbor. My client, who has a legally licensed grow, acquired this location with the full understanding impression that this use would continue. They did their due diligence with both the state and the city of Ann Arbor. Kings High received their preapproval from the CRA and was moving forward for final licensing when the state asked the city of Ann Arbor, for the exception of this location under their ordinance. This, however, did not exist, much to the surprise of all involved. As a result, Kings High stayed vacant. The city of Ann Arbor is out of their portion of the excise tax that they'd be entitled to. Further, come later this year, another dispensary will be out of compliance based upon the ordinance, and the city clerk will be unable to certify that they are outside the 1,000-foot requirement or that there is a city exemption for these locations. I'm here tonight to thank you for considering the modifications, the ordinance, or even doing a temporary provision that would correct this oversight by the city. I'm also here to ask that the resolution be a quick one and not take six months. If that occurs, my client will still be unable to open. The existing provisioning location will have to shut down, and this will become something more of a problem than it is now. I'm sure the city, like all cities, uses the money generated to help out with special projects, as they should. But with the contraction in the industry going on, it seems prudent to be proactive with our problem. So, thank you for your time. I want to thank John Reiser and Jen Cornell for working with us on this issue in such a professional and consistent manner, and we look forward to a quick resolution so we can become the good tax-paying business we expected when we started this approximately 10 months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Kelly.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I'm here on behalf of my son, Brandon Kelly. Brandon was a resident in Ann Arbor before he became homeless. Brandon was picked up by Ann Arbor police. He was homeless for several months, experiencing chronic mental illness. Brandon was placed in Washtenaw County jail, and he has not been receiving court order treatments. I have spoken with the DA's office, prosecuting attorney's office. I've been just pulling tooth and nails, trying to get him some court order treatment. The Ann Arbor police is well aware of his mental illness, because back in 2023, they picked him up. He was homeless, placed at U of M, and then to a mental facility. And I'm just, I don't know what else to do. You know, I've done everything, I've submitted everything to the courts in regards to his condition, but to see my son just falling apart in court is heartbreaking for a mother. We've lived in this area for 12 years, and we've worked, we've worked hard. I've probably, we've probably served a lot of you, because we're in essential services. I also read an article where it said, "Police: Four Times More Likely to Request Criminal Charges for Black People in Washtenaw County." That's disheartening. That's unconscionable to me. 71% of the voters in Washtenaw County voted for Kamala Harris. 17% of Washtenaw County is black. 7% is black in Ann Arbor. What is going on with our justice system, dealing with those who are homeless, those who are dealing with chronic mental illnesses? I really would like for the council to really take some time and look into that, because to see him falling apart, and I can't afford representation for my son, all I can do is submit and cry out and say, "Can you please just, you know, really have some compassion, you know, for him? We're a community, you know, and we're, you know, we're stronger together if we just take the time to listen." A lot of people hear, but they don't listen. And so, I am working with some people now. I went to the Board of Commissions yesterday and spoke, and they're trying to assist us in this, because, you know, he really needs some, he's suffering, and he really needs people to care. And, you know, I, I don't know what else to do in regards to getting him that court order treatment by, maybe the courts just having some compassion and recognizing that this erratic behavior in court is, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Henry Hershkovitz.
Good evening. Hopefully, our high school students listened with open minds to a segment of All Things Considered last month on National Public Radio. The broadcast included a documentary called Hitler's Mein Kampf: Prelude to the Holocaust, produced by two Jewish authors. John McCaulchick, one of the authors, describes Mein Kampf as "an unoriginal, incoherent mashup of racist theories and wounded pride." But is it? A recent translation of Mein Kampf by revisionist author Thomas Dalton strongly counters this claim by McCaulchick. Dalton writes, "As anti-Semitic as Hitler was, it's surprisingly how likely the Jews get off. They are banned from citizenship and therefore from any role in government or the press. Recent Jewish immigrants, like all immigrants, must leave, but no threats to imprison or kill Jews, no confiscation of wealth, and certainly nothing that sounds like a looming Holocaust." Here's the book. "Hitler impressed me with an understanding of the faint difference between Zionist and anti-Zionist Jews, a concept that took me over five years to fully grasp." He wrote, "There was a great movement among them, well represented in Vienna, and which strongly confirmed the national character of Jewry. This was Zionism. From outward appearances, it seemed as if only part of the Jews championed this movement, while a great majority disapproved or even repudiated it. But a close examination shows that these appearances were deliberately misleading. They emerged from a fog of theories that were produced for reasons of expediency, if not outright deception. The so-called liberal Jews did not reject the Zionists as if non-Jews, but only as brother Jews with an impractical or even dangerous way of promoting Jewry. This fictitious conflict between Zionists and liberal Jews soon disgusted me. It was thoroughly false and in direct contradiction to the moral dignity and immaculate character on which that people had prided itself." That was 100 years ago last month. I hope our students get a chance to read this excellent book and decide for themselves. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Griswold.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to repeat the information that would indicate that we have a crisis in this community. We have a crisis regarding our pedestrian crash rate. Trump recently fired someone because he didn't like the statistics that were given. Instead of firing someone in Ann Arbor, we just don't collect the data. Fortunately, Peter Hope is collecting the data. In 2023, we had 10 crashes, which was the highest in over a decade. In 2024, we had 10 crashes. I'm referring to fatal and serious pedestrian crashes. In 2025, year-to-date, we've had either 12 or 13 serious or fatal pedestrian crashes. These are real people. These are our neighbors, and we need to take immediate action to do something. One of the things that we can do is improve visibility. That would include illumination, positive contrast lighting, sightlines. I've talked about sightlines many, many times. I don't know why it's so complicated. Number three, we need local ordinances and ongoing oversight based on the six E's and safe systems approach. An example of sightlines and the problems that are occurring is the two-way cycle track on Miller Avenue. I know that's under construction, but in December 16th of 2023, the Walk-Bike Washtenaw Group issued a statement stating the problem with that two-way cycle track on the south side of Miller Avenue from First to Maple Road. Three things: wrong way cycling, cycle, cycle crashes, when you've got cyclists going in two ways, headlight confusion, and, though these problems exist to some degree with the four current cycle tracks around the downtown area, the problems are worse on Miller because of the higher car speeds, more conflict points on the south, nine street intersections in many driveways, less lighting, and a likelihood that people exercising less caution on Miller than downtown. So, while we're now in the construction phase, this information was brought to the city, again, December 16th of 2023. Lastly, I just want to leave you with this image, which I sent to the mayor already. We've had many construction sites where the contractors are given the use of our public right-of-way. It's a public right-of-way because it's owned by the public. It is not to be given to private developers unless there is an agreement, and it should be done only when we can maintain the safety of our citizens. The city addresses today, but please take a look at this.
Thank you. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Gazie Edwin?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Jessica Kelly, who I believe has left, for the story that she shared. It actually is heartbreaking, and it is kind of indicative of something that I'm going to share in a minute, and an issue that I believe that we need to work on with other jurisdictions. So, I want to speak about something that's related. I've received a number of calls and messages about this issue, and I share the concern, and I think it's important to share where our city stands. So, recently, the federal government released an executive order that encourages civil commitment and involuntary treatment for individuals experiencing homelessness who have mental illness or substance use disorder. This involves seeking to overturn or terminate judicial precedent and consent decrees. The order encourages the criminalization of homelessness, eases legal barriers to force commitment, and threatens to divert federal funding away from voluntary evidence-based programs like Housing First, harm reduction, and community-based behavioral health care. This is a dangerous step towards authoritarianism, and here in Ann Arbor, we reject this approach. We know from decades of research that institutionalization does not improve long-term mental or physical health outcomes, nor does it help people secure stable housing. What does work is a well-funded continuum of care that includes Housing First, permanent supportive services, quality mental health care, substance use disorder treatment, and community-based support, not incarceration or confinement. I'm working with housing service providers as well as our city staff to ensure our local policies reflect these values. I've also been in touch with members of the state legislature to encourage introduction of the Gloria Johnson Act here in Michigan, which is a bill designed to protect unhoused individuals from criminal penalties when no adequate shelter exists. We need state-level protections that uphold the dignity and rights of people who are unhoused, the majority of whom are people with disabilities with other marginalized identities. I want to thank organizations like the Shelter Association of Washtenaw County for releasing similar statements and for reaching out. Homelessness is not a crime. It's a structural failure that demands a compassionate and systemic response, and our best stands with this community and all of its marginalized communities. Thank you.
Councilmember Ackman?
So, because Councilmember Redina isn't here, I have the pleasure of showing you the library code. And I guess to start out with, I just want to thank residents for supporting Proposals A and B, which passed resoundingly. So, with that, I will show the code. I'm told I should also read it. It's A2 Every Park. And, did you know that Ann Arbor has 162 park properties? This summer is a great time to start the Visit Every Park Challenge and earn rewards along the way. You can register at Visit Every Park Challenge, and I believe that Councilmember Malick has done this challenge, maybe others on this body have as well, so I would encourage that. Second, I would like to correct the record with regard to one of the public comments stating that the city does not collect crash data. Every month, this body receives a report from the city administrator on crashes, and we get crash report overall that comes from the state once a year. In addition to that, on Transportation Commission, we review serious and fatal crashes, and I'm working to codify that review in our city ordinance right now. It's a tragedy anytime someone gets seriously injured or killed on our roads, and that's something that this body takes seriously. And, so, yeah, I wanted to correct the record. Thanks.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yeah, it's supposed to be really nice this weekend, and so I wanted to remind our community that our downtown summer streets are still happening, that means Main Street and parts of Liberty are closed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, and I wanted to let people know of some really fun programming. Thursday and Friday night, both from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., there'll be live music, including, for those of you who have particular tastes, the 251 Orchestra, which should be very impressive and fun. And then on Saturday, from 8:30 to 10:30, and I am really ridiculously excited about this, a silent disco, which will be right outside of Cherry Republic. So, I hope that you will come down, experience how vibrant our city streets are on the weekend evenings, and what it's like for the people to be able to take the streets and have the cars gone. So, I hope to see you out there.
Councilmember Dish?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Thank you for the weather report and the invitation, Councilmember Cornell. I want to remind everyone on behalf of me and Councilmember Harrison that we will be having a coffee hour at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, August 25th, at the Lower Town Bar and Cafe, and our special guests that evening will be members of the planning staff. It will certainly be Mr. Lennox and possibly Ms. Bennett, and we will be talking about, we will be taking your questions about the comprehensive land use plan. So, we'll be psyched to see you there. I'd like to echo the thanks that have already been given to people who came out and voted, and glad that, for everyone who came out, but particularly glad for passing of A and B, because we will have a beautiful new library. It's not going to happen overnight, but it's going to be a space that will be welcoming and functional and filled with lots of useful services for everyone, no matter how you voted on the propositions.
Councilmember Malick?
I just wanted to confirm what Councilmember Ackman brought up about me having visited every park in Ann Arbor, all 162. But I bring that up only to say I visited them last year, all of them, and I just finally got my act together and collected my prizes for visiting them all, including some of the lower tiers for visiting 25, 50, and 75. I believe it was a pin, a sticker, but some of the larger prizes, like for visiting them all, was a sweatshirt and a T-shirt that say, "Visit Every Park." So, another incentive to get out there and see them all. Thanks.
Further communication from council? I'd like to recommend the following nomination for your consideration to the Star District Commission, Sarah Nisbet, and Jenna Carter. In terms of that, I'd like to extend the thanks parade a little bit in connection with our election, of course, to all the voters who turned out on Tuesday and beforehand, but also crucially to our staff. And by that, of course, with primacy, we have our amazing and dispensable clerk, Jackie Boudreaux, and her staff. But also, it's important to realize and recognize that the election that we, as a city, we as a community, run every cycle, it is staffed by temporary workers in the main. They come out, they're committed to doing their part, to participating in the democracy, ensuring the effective and accurate exercise of that democracy, and we frankly couldn't do without them. And so, I just want to extend an additional thanks towards those folks. We now have before us the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Councilmember Dish, signed by Councilmember Watson. Discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Dish?
I don't want to pull anything, but I wanted to make a couple of remarks about items CA 6 through CA 14. This is a series of items that have to do with the Bryant Community Decarbonization Project, and this project will be providing residents of Bryant with services ranging from energy efficiency, electrification, battery storage, to geothermal heating and cooling. This is an incredible project, and the residents of this neighborhood are amazing to be signing up for all this work and testing this technology. It is brave. They are forging a trail. These items cover about $10 million in grants. It's maybe even a little bit longer, more than that, and this is both a working partnership between OSI and the Community Action Network and the County Office of Community and Economic Development, and with Ann Arbor's Sustainable Energy Utility. So, that is an amazing working partnership, and it is the funding partnership with McKnight Foundation, the Michigan Public Service Commission, the state of Michigan, Washtenaw County OCED as well. And so, this is a remarkable effort that I don't know what the flowchart looks like to manage it, because it's nutty, but it is moving us, not into the 21st century, but I think into the 22nd.
Further discussion of the consent agenda. I just want to gild the lily a little bit with respect to the work that the city will be doing in the Bryant area. It is another example of the indispensable work performed and organized under a set of extremely trying circumstances by the Office of Sustainability and Innovation, led, of course, by Dr. Stoltz, and in collaboration, as Councilmember Dish identified, with the good people in the Bryant neighborhood. We know that all too often, our lower-income areas of our communities throughout Ann Arbor and throughout the country receive insufficient attention and...
So that is an amazing working partnership, and it is the funding partnership with McKnight Foundation, the Michigan Public Service Commission, the State of Michigan, Washtenaw County OCED as well. And so this is a remarkable effort that I don't know what the flow chart looks like to manage it because it's nutty, but it is moving us not into the 21st century, but I think into the 22nd.
Further discussion of the Consent Agenda. I just want to gild the lily a little bit with respect to the work that the city will be doing in the Bryant area. It is another example of the indispensable work performed and organized under a set of extremely trying circumstances by the Office of Sustainability and Innovation, led, of course, by Dr. Stoltz, and in collaboration, as Councilmember Dish identified, with the good people in the Bryant neighborhood. We know that all too often, our lower-income areas of our communities throughout Ann Arbor and throughout the country receive insufficient attention, and we in Ann Arbor are committed to reversing that trend. We, as a municipal organization, have worked with the residents of the Bryant District, making sure that they understand and lead what needs to be done in their neighborhood, and we are committed to helping them accomplish their goals. The insulation services, weatherization services, solar energy appliance replacement, roof work, solar work, electrical system, heating and cooling, and I probably missed something else. All that work that's going to be done in the Bryant neighborhood over the course of the next couple is going to substantially improve the health of our residents and the quality of their lives and affordability. And I couldn't be more excited and proud about the work the municipal organization is doing in this context. Further discussion. Sorry, Councilmember Ackman.
Can we pull CA 16?
All in favor of the Consent Agenda with the section of CA 16? All approved? All opposed? The Consent Agenda with the exception of CA 16 is approved with 10 councilmembers present, all voting in affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement with respect to CA 1, CA 14. That is all. CA 16, resolution to approve the Third Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with Miller, Canfield, Paddock &amp; Stone, PLC, for professional services relating to the Arbor South Project and appropriate funds in the amount of $100,000. Move by. Councilmember Briggs second by. Councilmember Ackman, discussion, please, of CA 16. Councilmember Ackman.
Hoping I could address a question to the city attorney. Given that this is the Third Amendment to this for legal services, I was hoping you could speak to the kinds of legal services that we're trying to get assistance with on this.
Sure. This is to help with the Arbor South proposed development and the public-private partnership. And the reason you're seeing a Third Amendment is because, well, the project and discussions have been going on for an extended period of time. We are trying, and in fact, we do most of the work in-house in the team, but it has proven to be essential, really essential, to have Mr. Fazio to consult with, because frankly, Ann Arbor has not done a public-private partnership deal in the hundreds of millions of dollars. And while our team is really capable, he has done these deals across the state and even nationally, and it helps to just issue spot with him. Frankly, if I were letting him do all the work, we would have a much higher bill than this, but we do need him to consult with periodically. Also, the ownership structure proposed in the deal is that of a condominium concept, which is not something that we are very used to dealing with in the team, so we could use his expertise there.
Thank you. So I've raised concerns about the city's participation in this project, and I guess I want to take this opportunity once again to say that I think that the project itself is great. The amount of housing, very compelling, affordable housing, very compelling. I remain concerned about our participation in the parking garages, and the ownership structure that this feels like it's moving towards has me even more concerned because I'm worried that it limits what we can perhaps repurpose these to do. So obviously, I'm supportive of doing our due diligence on this project, but I'm not sure I can support, you know, continued investment in this because I still have too many concerns. Thanks.
Councilor Gauzy Edwin.
Thank you. I appreciate, you know, some of the comments that Councilmember Ackman shared, and I also have similar kind of hesitations and concerns, but from talking to you and hearing more about some of the resources that your office needs, as well as the expertise, I hope that that, by retaining these services, that I will be able to get some of that information and answer to those questions. So that is why I will be supporting this tonight.
Observing that eight votes are required and anticipating that there will be three, perhaps votes opposed, that puts us at seven. Move on. Any further questions? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina, absent? Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ayer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ackman?
No.
Councilwoman Briggs?
No.
Councilwoman Cornell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We do not have any public hearings today. We have before us the regular session meeting minutes, the July 21, and the work session minutes of July 28, 2025. May I have a motion, please, to approve these minutes? Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of A1. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. We do not have any second or first readings. We do have DC1 Resolution Regarding the Draft Comprehensive Land Use Plan Contract Amendment. Move by. Councilmember Dish, seconded by. Councilmember Watson, discussion, please, of DC1. All in favor? All opposed? Do you want to roll that? It's a question. No is okay, yes is okay. Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Malik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Redina, absent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ayer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ackman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Briggs?
No.
Councilwoman Cornell?
No.
Motion carries.
DC2, resolution to adopt the City of Ann Arbor Unmanned Aircraft Systems UAS Use Policy. Moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilwoman Malik. Discussion, please, of DC2. Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin.
I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution. Clerk Boudry, if you could please circulate the amendment. Should I just go ahead and read it? Okay. So I would like to add the following resolved clause to the end of the resolution, is the last resolved clause, and it reads, "Resolved that City Council directs the city administrator to report back within six months of the policy's implementation on how drones have been used in order to help city council determine whether any amendments or additional protections should be considered."
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion, rather. Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin, you're still on the floor.
Thank you. You know, before I speak to the reasoning behind this amendment, I just want to take a moment to thank a few people. This is going to be like credits at a movie, but City Administrator Milton Dehony, Deputy City Administrator Maria Walton, City Prosecutor Jen Janetsky, Chief Anderson, especially Councilmember Redina and Councilmember Harrison, as well as members of the ACLU and other advocates. I want to thank you, you know, all of them really worked collaboratively and deliberately to address the privacy and constitutional concerns that often accompany surveillance-related technologies. I know specifically that Councilmember Redina worked extensively with the ACLU to ensure that some of these concerns were addressed and that this policy aligned with best practices on surveillance. That being said, you know, I'm supportive of establishing a drone use policy. I understand that there's an array of different uses that are needed. At the same time, you know, I do have some reservations about the language laid out in this resolution. I know that residents are also concerned about privacy and data use, and I also know that our councilmembers and our staff, I don't want to speak for everyone, but we too, you know, we're committed to ensuring that these concerns are addressed and protecting resident data. So with that being said, you know, with us implementing use of new technologies, I really believe we just have a responsibility to monitor how they're being used and to evaluate whether they'll align with some of our values on civil liberties, and this is why I am proposing that a report comes back in six months.
Is that friendly to the body? It's friendly. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Further discussion, the main motion is amended.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just wanted to say a couple things. I want to thank our staff, including police chief, fire chief, IT team, and the legal counsel, especially Jen Janetsky, for working closely with the council administration committee and the ACLU to shape a drone policy that puts community trust and data integrity first. Thank you for your dedication to responsible governance in this rapidly evolving digital age. In an era when third-party platforms are quietly sharing sensitive data without warrants or clear consent, our choice to host footage internally is both a technical decision and a civil liberties safeguard. It protects our first responders from unintended misuse and shields residents from exploitation by AI systems or opaque surveillance practices. Thank you.
Councilmember Ackman.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Gauzy Edwin for bringing the amendment forward because it addresses one of the things that I thought as I looked at this policy, which is how can the city have more transparency into how these are being used? And, you know, recently, for example, I had a drone fly, it was not, I don't know what it was. It was a drone flying around my neighborhood. We could hear it, it was going into different yards, and you start wondering, what the heck is this drone? I feel like being transparent about our data allows people to, you know, not assume that it's law enforcement. I guess you could wonder what else it is, but we should at least be doing our due diligence. So I appreciate that we're going to have a report, a report back, and I would really like for us to explore how we can present any kind of, the most simple dashboard that reports on activity of this, because I think it's important along with the rest of our police activities. Thanks.
Councilmember Cornell.
I have a question, I believe, for Ms. Cor, but in Section 4, it says, "People also have a reasonable expectation against being subjected to prolonged aerial surveillance or being followed by UAS surveillance, even in public areas, for significant periods of time." And my significant might be four hours, and Councilmember Briggs might be five minutes. So is there a standard definition around that, or how is that defined?
Can I call in Attorney Janetsky since she researched the issue?
You may.
Thank you. Mayor, she's joining us on Zoom.
Hopefully I can be heard at this point.
You can.
Okay, wonderful. There is no standing legal definition of a significant amount of time. That was language that was suggested by the ACLU and accepted.
If I may ask a follow-up, then, I guess what I'm understanding from your response is that this is, could this be considered a best practice, that language in particular? It feels ambiguous to me, that's why I'm trying to understand it.
I'm not certain of what you mean by your question. Is it a best practice to have that language in?
Just that the best we can do is a significant period of time, and that's what those who are very actively involved in these issues have recommended to the city.
I think that the significant amount of time allows for various definitions of the word significant. So as you raised, my significant may be different than Mayor Taylor's significant, and it allows for people to raise a legal issue should they feel it's significant on their own set of standards.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
May I say something?
Please, always.
So I think what this will do, as I'm hearing the discussion, is I think what this will do is if a resident feels that five minutes is significant for them, they will be able to raise the issue with the city, whereas another who may not think five is significant will be okay with having the drone up there for five minutes or more. But it allows residents the flexibility of raising the issue with the city of what they think is significant.
Councilwoman Gauzy Edwin.
Thank you. You know, I think it would also be helpful to kind of just explain broadly, what are the main uses for drones, right? What are they typically not used for? In addition, like, what would be considered in violation of this policy or against the Constitution, for example? I don't know if following a random person might, for example, fit into that. I have a feeling it would, but maybe I'm wrong. So if you could answer that, that would be appreciated.
I think you're correct, but I'm deferring back to Ms. Janetsky. And we have specifically written in protections to ensure that the drones are not used in that way. It's the intention of the AAPD, which has been clearly stated by our chief and supported by our chief, that it will be used for limited purposes such as finding missing persons. It can be used in situations where there is an active hostage situation or an active incident that requires an overhead surveillance to be able to get either the public or police in and out safely. It will not be used for surveillance in the sense of running through Ann Arbor at random, but would be subject to things like search warrant requirements, which are constitutionally clearly stated, and/or exigent circumstances, which, again, are very clearly stated. So there's an entire body of criminal law that has a whole set of rules and regulations that must be followed for such action to be constitutional, and that would absolutely be followed if we were to use them in any manner that was part of a criminal investigation.
Other uses in the city include monitoring towers, where it's difficult for, and dangerous for our workers to climb. If fire has to address, the fire department has to address a fire, they can use a drone to assess the dangerous nature of the building before they send people to enter it. If somebody is lost and separated from their family on Huron River, instead of sending staff to cover sections of the river, the drone can help locate the lost child or family member. These are some of the other uses that are contemplated in the policy.
Councilmember Watson.
Add one thing. You might be wondering, well, surely the city's doing water rescues and any number of things right now, but we haven't had a drone policy. And the answer is that we rely now on other jurisdictions to provide drone services, so the Sheriff's Department, other things. So the city hasn't been conducting any of these activities yet. This, approving this policy is what allows then, now, the police department to go forward using drones and fire and emergency services. But just want to be clear that if people have, if drones have been used in the course of operations, they've been from participating jurisdictions, helping.
I'll take your first one as being on the amendment, so go ahead. Sure.
Appreciate it. I know there's a lot of questions tonight. I was wondering, you know, either one of you, if you could answer to just, there was an addition today made in regards to protecting data collected by the drone or these sort of devices and shared with other entities. Can you speak a little bit to, is this data just going to be handed over publicly available? How will it be protected?
That was actually your addition, it was a late addition, it was a good addition, and the intention of the addition is to ensure that we do not share data with any other organization unless the city specifically authorizes that release or it is required by law. So it's not something we will hand off to other organizations or other entities without following the law and having an allegiance to the law or with a specific permission of city to do so.
Thank you.
Further discussion? I'd like to express gratitude to staff for working so hard on this, knowing that it is an area of interest and sensitivity for many folks in the community, and also to the various councilmembers who have worked hard on this measure. It is requ-
It has required a lot of diligence, working with staff, working with outside stakeholders and outside experts. And I think that the policy that we have will serve the city and its community members well. Further discussion?
All in favor? All opposed? It is approved, DC 3 Resolution directing the Ann Arbor Planning Commission to review the marijuana facilities provisions of the Uniform Development Code, moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion please of DC 3. Counselor member Cornell.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Leonard and Attorney Riser and Attorney Cor's office for being so helpful with this and for the dispensary owners who've taken a lot of time to provide feedback on this in particular and to answer questions. And so, just as a reminder, the marijuana ordinance, our, our city's marijuana ordinance has not been revisited or revised in six years since its inception. And based on those conversations, my belief, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of the city, but my belief is that they are, the assumptions that were made are not necessarily based on today's current market realities, which is unusual. So as the resolution states, Big Rapids, Marquette, Battle Creek, other municipalities have actually adjusted their ordinances and revised them to reflect what is actually happening within this community, within their communities. I also want to point out that the money we collect through the marijuana excise tax, as had been pointed out by one of our commenters, is valuable to the city. It allows us to do work that is outside of the normal city budget that is incredibly impactful. And so when Councilmember Gazi Edwin earlier was talking about mental health services and the impact of substance use disorder on our homeless population, that is money that we can use to address that and do really good work in our community. And so regardless of whether you toke or not, this is beneficial to all of us and those who are most impacted by the criminal justice system and mental health issues. And so while this specific resolution asks that the planning commission evaluate how we regulate going forward, we heard tonight that there is an immediate need. Two businesses in our community will not be allowed to operate in locations where businesses previously were allowed to operate. And I don't think that we want to be in the business of putting businesses that benefit our community, as I just stated, in peril. So I'm wondering if Attorney Riser can speak to whether the city can look into a temporary ordinance with a sunset clause to address specifically the distance from the Doughty Montessori school so that these businesses can operate. And the reason why I'm asking is this planning commission process, while in this draft is directed at six months, we could choose to extend that and therefore put these two businesses out of business.
Good morning. Good morning. Good evening, councilmembers. And thank you for calling me up here. Yes, like other municipalities have, a city can have an ordinance that reduces the thousand-foot requirement in state law. MCL 333-27959 says that it can't be within 1,000 feet of a pre-existing public or private school providing education in kindergarten or any of grades one through 12 unless a municipality adopts an ordinance that reduces the distance requirement. The right way to do that is to have the planning commission, I mean, study it, where should they go, and all the requirements. That's Chapter 55. We also have Chapter 96 that regulates cannabis facilities generally. However, you, we could look into and check with the state on, they want an ordinance. We could have a, we could have a temporary chapter with a sunset provision with something to the effect like, notwithstanding the provisions of any other chapter of the city code of Ann Arbor, the distance requirements between the pre-existing K through 12 school at 416 South Ashley shall be reduced to 250 feet with a sunset provision of perhaps January 1, 2027, to give the planning commission some breathing room to study it. Because the planning commission, as you'll see in your resolution, is asked to look at broader things, such as the use of a special exemption, SEU permit, whether that's the best way to regulate where cannabis, they go. Because right now, you can't, a dispensary can't, or a provisioning center can't move to a place that doesn't have an SEU. So you're kind of tied to the parcel. But to answer your direct question, we can look into the, whether a temporary chap, or a chapter temporarily reducing the distance requirement. I would check with the state on that, but I don't want to give legal advice on the fly, but that's something that we're going to look into. And if we think that we can, we can bring something back at the earliest juncture if so requested.
Thank you. To, I guess, one point and a quick question while you still have you, Mr. Riser. There have been zero complaints about either one of these facilities in question. Public Safety's now had to address it. There's been zero complaints to the city, and that's an important point to make. And then I guess, Mr. Riser, what would you consider to be a reasonable timeline to come back to us with your counsel on whether or not that's something that is permissible for us to do with the temporary change?
Well, you know, it's going to take publication and, you know, first, first reading, second reading, public hearing, and then 10 days into effect generally. So pretty soon, because summer come and do in the fall. And we would also want to do our due diligence to check our maps, because this came about because the Cannabis Regulatory Agency, they're, they're being more circumspect with respect to where these are, to see if there might be anything else out there, any gotchas for us. So that's something I work with the clerk staff to make sure that they're, we're not vulnerable at any other location. But pretty quick.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion? Counselor member Briggs.
Yeah, and I want to thank Councilmember Cornell for being on top of this. I know that this is certainly not an issue where we want to put existing businesses out of, out of business. Both my kids went to Doughty Montessori and certainly proximity, though that was a while ago. I know that from the staff there, this is, this is not a concern to them. However, I would like to propose a pretty significant amendment to the resolution that's in front of us tonight. I've sent that around to Ms. Bowdre. She can share that.
And while you're waiting for that to come up, to answer your question, Councilmember Cornell, I did check with the police command to see if there had been complaints at any of the facilities, and there's been no incidents or complaints there.
So hopefully that's coming into your indexes. So basically what the resolution does is to just focus, this amendment is to focus just on the issue at hand, which is whether the 1,000-foot distance requirement from kindergarten should remain in place or be reduced citywide or reduced in certain zoning districts or locations, in particular the DDA. And there's a little focus at the end around trying to expedite this. I've struck pretty much all the other review pieces for now. I don't, basically, you know, this, this was brought to us because of, you know, a challenge within the DDA, a very isolated incident. I personally don't see a need at this point to, given all the other planning issues that we've going, have going on right now, to focus our attention on the other elements of the, of our marijuana ordinance. So I think my, my preference would be have us focused on the issue at hand and leave, leave these other issues around, you know, our cap, whether that should be lifted, you know, the special exception use, and the other, you know, reviewing of the other UDC provisions for a later date.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Dish. Just further discussion of the amendment. Counselor Cornell.
I appreciate my Ward 5 colleague very much. The reason, there are a lot of practicalities around why this is more comprehensive, and I believe Mr. Riser briefly touched on this, he did, is that when we're talking about locations, there are multiple factors. The ordinance is complex, as written. And so if you say yes to one thing, it may be in violation of another. So getting the holistic picture of it allows us to inform our planning staff and the city clerk's office as to where we might trip, trip ourselves up because there are so many different factors layered into this original ordinance. And Mr. Riser, if I misspoke, will you please correct me?
I will if you do.
Oh, yes.
But you haven't.
Briggs, I mean, Gazi Edwin.
Because I, prior to being on the council, when I first served on planning commissioner, at one point when I started on planning commission, I went through the process of when we were enacting and considering what the, this, our ordinance would be. And I remember those discussions, and they were long discussions, and they were weighty, and we had a lot of public input, and it was, it was a lot. And so I am just thinking that while there are reviews that are important to do of our ordinances periodically, I'm not sure this is where our intention, attention needs to be right now.
Counselor member Ackman.
Yeah, I was wondering if, so I think it's completely reasonable that after five years we would take a look at this and see if it's still right. And I appreciate the very real and present problems that a couple of these businesses are facing and agree that we should address them expeditiously. I guess I have a question, maybe it's for staff, or maybe Councilmember Dish wants to comment on it, and just how this fits in with our other planning work, specifically the comprehensive plan. I would not want this to push that out or delay it any further. And maybe a subsequent question is, if we're able to enact this, like, quicker ordinance, could we perhaps delay this work so that it wasn't due in six months? Is kind of what I'm wondering. So, sorry, that was a lot of questions and thoughts.
Mr. Leonard, I think, is coming in.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here. I don't think this would have a significant impact on the comprehensive plan. I do want to be mindful, I appreciate the resolution as it's drafted, gives us some space to spend a little bit of time researching. There were mentions of other communities. I would just add to the conversation if, if you're interested. I think when, just a reminder, when we constructed the framework for these regulations, it was a relatively new use. They have been in our community for a long time. As noted, they have not resulted, I think, in some of the fearful outcomes that maybe some were, we were trying to prevent against by being, putting together the regulatory structure in place. But we are, of course, happy to follow up on either this sort of more comprehensive resolution or a more focused one, whatever the direction is.
Thank you.
Counselor member Gazi Edwin.
Thank you. I actually just had my question answered. Thanks.
Counselor member Dish.
Um, I've, let's see, Mr. Leonard has spoken. I, I guess I'll ask a question of Mr. Leonard. Mr. Leonard, if there, there is an urgent situation for some potential license holders and an existing license holder that involves a November timeline, even, would even just focusing on the one piece about the 1,000-foot distance from kindergartens, does that even have a chance of making it through the multiple, the drafting process, the multiple readings at planning commission and the multiple readings at council in time to address that proximate situation?
I continue to be impressed with your command of the messy zoning bureaucratic process. To be clear, if this resolution is passed this evening, under the fastest scenario under our current ordinance and state law structures, if you were to give me and my team one day, business day upon adoption of this, that would cause the need for me to publish, schedule a public hearing for the planning commission on Monday, which would then result in a timeframe where you would have it in front of you ideally for second reading on November 3rd. So if you would like to give me and my team more time, which I would be grateful for, I would recommend, that's why within the six months is, is, I think, a reasonable timeframe. I don't expect that it will take that long. But to your question, even a narrow change would have to move. And I would say, a narrow change would, we would be able to move quickly if your resolution were to, for example, for example, suggest, the planning commission, please consider the elimination of the separation of facility requirements from K through 12 schools. That is a, that is, of course, a very specific direction that we could address. We could construct that language quickly and schedule it for consideration quickly. As we look more holistically at other approaches or more comprehensively, I would be grateful, of course, for more time so we can deliver the planning commission and the council a more refined product.
So I wonder about amending, is there then a need to amend this resolution to say, please prioritize that one piece and take your time with the rest?
Well, right now, we have an amendment on the floor that would, that would affect that.
Yes, we have an amendment on the floor that would take out everything except the one piece.
Further discussion of that amendment? Counselor Ackman.
Sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting a little lost now. I know that what, what we're considering with the amendment, I don't understand how this more quick thing that you're going to look into, Mr. Riser, might impact this. Would it still have to go to planning commission if we did this, like, what was it called? I'm sorry.
I wouldn't do it. I would not propose an amendment to Chapter 55. We regulate Chapter 55 through zoning and 96 through marijuana. This would be a separate chapter that starts out, notwithstanding maybe some finings and purpose, notwithstanding the provisions of any other chapter contained within the city code of Ann Arbor, i.e. 55 and 96. The distance requirements between pre-existing K or K through 12 or a pre-existing school at 450 or whatever it is, 412 Ashley, shall be reduced to 250 feet with a sunset provision.
Okay. So that's separate, something the council could do on its own? No planning commission? Okay, got it.
A temporary one's the fix, but a resolution of subsort is the big picture, how should we regulate cannabis?
Okay, got it. Thanks.
On the amendment.
Counselor Dish, you?
I'm counting my, if I spoke too many times already.
I don't think you, I think you've spoken once on the amendment.
Great, okay. So I think I'm going to, I support the idea of the amendment, which is to prioritize on the one thing. But I think I'm going to vote against it because I think it's worth looking at the rest. And I would perhaps just, just pass the original resolution. And if we needed to amend it, or we can just know that Mr. Leonard is hearing us what we want him to prioritize, and the six-month deadline can always be extended. That's on the original resolution. Planning commission can always say, our meetings have been going till midnight, and we're going to wait on this one. But I don't think we need to strip all those pieces out because it actually sounds like there's a willingness to look at some of those pieces. It's just not clear, that, those are not urgent. The one thing is urgent. And we can ask the attorney's office in parallel to explore the other option to take, further take the pressure off the planning commission.
Further discussion of the amendment? On the amendment, roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Dish.
Counselor member Dish?
No.
Counselor Harrison?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
No.
Counselor Malik?
No.
Counselor Medina, absent? Counselor Gazi Edwin?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Iron?
Yes.
Counselor Ackman?
No.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Cornell?
No.
Motion fails.
Further discussion of the main motion. Counselor Gazi Edwin.
Thank you. So to just clarify- Thank you. So to just clarify, Councilmember Dish, if, I mean, I think that one of the things that I'm concerned about from just talking to Mr. Leonard is capacity of his office at this time, just due to some of the, you know, we've, we've issued resolutions that are, that have resulted in pretty substantive changes to the, to the plan. And it sounds like, Councilmember Dish, what you're saying is, if we needed to extend the six months, we could. We don't have to make an amendment to this at this time. And if that's the case, I'm okay with supporting this, as Mr. Leonard indicated, that this would be within capacity and reasonable to explore at this time. Thanks.
Further discussion? Councilmember Briggs.
I guess for my part, I feel like the cap of 28 is, is sufficient. It's one of the things that I've heard from a fair amount, actually from kids in our community. And also, I believe in the special exception use being appropriate. I remember those conversations, and I think there's been some strong benefits to having the SEU. So I'll just put that out there. Any comments?
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. Ms. Cor, do we have the pleasure of a closed session today?
No, thank you, Mayor.
We have before us the Clerk's Report of Communications, Petitions, and Referrals. May I have a motion, please, to approve the Clerk's Report, moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Malik. Discussion of the Clerk's Report. All in favor? Opposed? The Clerk's Report is approved. Do we have communications today from our city attorney?
No, thank you, Mayor.
In the absence of public comment overflow, may I please have a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Were adjourned.